Good evening. I would like to call the May 6, 2024 Alexander County Board of Commissioners regular monthly meeting to order. At this time, I will recognize Commissioner Ronnie Reese for our invocation. Commissioner Kent Herman is not with us, so I would ask Commissioner Larry Yoder to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
Let's pray. Our Father, we thank you for another day that you've given to us and all the blessings of it, opportunity to come back here or to have our meeting, give us the ability to make wise decisions as we do things that will move Alexander County forward. Pray for all those whose services each day and all our employees over the county, each one who interacts with anything that goes on with the county. I pray you protect them and Lord just thank you for the good things that you do. Thank you for just being God. We thank you for that. Be with us through this meeting and get us to our homes safely. In your name we pray. Amen.
Attention, salute, pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I'm going to be seated. Thank you, gentlemen. Next item on the agenda is Commissioners' Reports. Does it do any -- Commissioners have anything they would like to report?
We opened up the Apple Blossom Festival Saturday morning. Everything went well for a little while, and then I think overcloud we had the azovs opened up and they finally called it off and left. Then on Sunday, we had a prayer for those officers that were killed in Charlotte. We had a vigil for those folks and for the four that were injured. Folks, I just want to say that it's extremely important that we support our law enforcement officers, probation officers, and all those who are involved in law enforcement some way that respond to things that most of you wouldn't want to respond to. These guys put their lives and ladies, these ladies and gentlemen, put their lives on the line each day for us. Sometimes they don't make it home. And I guess the one that bothers me the most and it all bothered me that they were killed in the line of duty. All of them had kids at home, but one had a three-year-old at home, three-year-old child. And these guys want to do like the rest of us do and ladies. They want to do just like all of us do. They want to go to work and they want to come back home at night. And from the bottom of my heart, I think it's extremely imperative that we support our law enforcement officers. Pray for them each and every day because you never know when you're going to be in a situation, you have to call them and shots could be fired. So just pray for them, keep them in your hearts and your minds, and when you see them, thank them. Tell them you appreciate what they do. I know that they do it because they want to, but they do it because they want to serve the citizens. So it's a very sad situation. A lot of people injured and a lot of people killed, and it's just not right that those kind of things could happen. So I'd ask for your prayers for these law enforcement officers. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
I do have one thing that I want to mention. I've had a couple of conversations with the Director of the West Peabody Council of Governments and pertaining to inter-basin transfer, which basically is an IBT, which is basically water from the Catawba River Basin, you know, being pulled out and pumped for municipal And one thing that we need to watch closely and are going to watch closely, and I have information about a meeting that we can all attend pertaining to Charlotte specifically needing a lot more water than they currently have, you know, needing a lot more water than they currently have. And at some point, well, at some time in the future, there will, we will come to a point that, you know, that there's a limit to how much water can be taken out of the Catawba River Basin, you know, for, you know, for municipal or for people to use. And so those of us that are further upstream and are not growing as fast as, you know, cities like Charlotte and the surrounding cities, we need to be very careful and make sure that we're represented in these discussions. You know, I don't think there's any fear of us losing, you know, losing, but it's a hot topic right now and some of them we've got to look into. Anyone else?
You want to tell them where the meeting is?
I will. Well.
It's at 5:30, I believe, and it's at Ridgeview.
Ridgeview Library.
Yeah, Ridgeview Library.
In Hickory.
And it does not hold many people, so if you want to go to the meeting and hear what's going on, you're probably going to get there, I'd say by about 4:30, 15:05, because if you don't, it'll fill up fast. And this is the second time that I know of in 10 years that Charlotte Mecklenburg has asked for more water from the Catawba River Basin. The last time they did it, the, that water park at the motel there in Concord, I believe it is, or wherever, they did it then when they were going to need all that water to open up that venue there. So that's something that you need to pay real close attention to because it will affect us before it's over with in a negative way.
And I had, I mean, I have an email with the date, time.
Yeah, I do too, but I left my phone in the car.
It's this Wednesday at 5:30.
Okay, I'll say it is this coming Wednesday at 5:30, like I say, at the Ridgeview Library in Hickory, if anyone, you know, would like to attend. Information about it, you know, was sent out to, obviously to, you know, County Commissioners as well as town council people, you know, all throughout our area. And like Commissioner Yoder said, Ridgeview Library is not a huge venue, so if anyone's interested in going, I would recommend being early. Moving right along, gentlemen, we need to adopt our agenda. Do I have a motion to adopt the agenda as written?
Make a motion to adopt the agenda as stated in our books.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Are there any discussion? If not, all in favor, please raise your right hand. Motion passes unanimously. We are now to public comment period. We do not have anyone signed up for our general public comment, so we will move right along. Next item is a public hearing for the Land Development Code, potential Land Development Code approval. We will recognize Brian Burgess, Director of Planning and Development. And gentlemen, we need a motion to open a public hearing, please.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to open the public hearing pertaining to Land Development Code approval. Is there any discussion? If not, all in favor, raise your right hand. Motion passes unanimously. We are now in open or we are now in a public hearing.
Thank you, Chairman, Commissioners. I don't have a lot to go over tonight. We did a presentation last month, kind of going over the broad strokes of the Land Development Code. Chairman Lell has had a couple of conversations with me, asking questions, clarification. I know folks have been reaching out, so I'm just going to open the space up for both public comment and for you guys to ask any questions that you have of me so that you can make the informed decision before you have to vote, so.
Mr. Burgess, I do have a couple of questions that were brought to my attention, and biggest thing, I want to make sure that the public knows, you know, knows what this, you know, what the zoning district regulations or proposed change, you know, new zoning district regulations entail. First question, is there any limitation with the new zoning districts? Is there any limitation pertaining to agriculture?
No. By state law, agriculture is exempt from zoning. Can't touch it if it's a bona fide farm.
Good deal. Second question, and I have a portion of it with me. I remember it was page 70, maybe not. Here we go, 60. In the, you know, in the proposed regulations, there's a chart which I feel like is the, this is the, hey, this is what you can do and what you can't do. And charts are always good because I can look at a chart and glean a lot more information from it than if I have a four-page document to read. But the question is, manufactured housing, there are two different classifications, one being multi-section, which would be double-wide, triple-wide, even an on-frame modular, I would assume.
If it meets, if it's only built to HUD standard, yes. If it's built to state building code, it's just a single-family home.
Anyway, question is, a multi-section manufactured home is allowed, you know, is allowed in or is permitted in R2, R2R, and R3. It is not permitted in R1. If there is a double-wide or, you know, triple-wide, whatever it may be, that falls under that category in R1 currently, and this is passed and the zoning for that piece of property changes, let's say there's a fire and, you know, double-wide's destroyed. Is there any, you know, is there anything that keeps those folks from putting, you know, putting a new double-wide back if that's what they, you know, if that's what they currently have?
So in that situation, they would have 180 days to come start the process. They're protected grandfathered as long as they're within that window. So, you know, let's say something happens and they come in on the 179th day and pull a permit, they're protected at that point. They've guaranteed their rights. If it goes for a long time, so basically 181 days or longer, so over six months, it would revert back to the zoning standard, but because it's by state law, it's considered abandoned at that point, so.
Okay. What if someone currently has a double-wide on a, you know, piece of property and they just decide they want a newer, you know, they want to replace their existing double-wide with a newer double-wide? Is that, do they still fall under the grandfathered? Would they still be grandfathered to do that?
As long as we're talking the same dimensions, yes. So if you were to go from, I don't know, 40 foot to a 60 foot or something, we may have to have a different conversation, but if it's just, this is the same double-wide, it's just newer, absolutely they can do that. Basically, it's like for like, it's grandfathered like for like.
So you're saying same footprint?
Exactly. Taken away like a porch, I mean, that's all the structure itself, yeah.
And I mean, and one reason I ask that is, I mean, there's a lot of manufactured homes in Alexander County, and with the cost, you know, with inflation we've experienced and home values doing what they've done over the past, you know, five years, affordable housing is a major issue, which this, you know, this land use, you know, redo, one of the reasons that we need, you know, one of the reasons that we wanted to do it is to try to help with the affordable housing issue that, you know, that we're facing as well as everyone else is facing. And overall, I feel like it does that very well. But like I say, there were just a couple, you know, a couple of things. Then the third and final question, if someone has a home-based business, you know, and I know there's, there are criteria that kind of determine whether a business is a commercial, you know, I mean, should be considered commercial and/or, you know, could be home-based. But if somebody has a home-based business and they currently, you know, are operating in, you know, whatever small, whatever small business it is out of their home, will these changes affect their ability to do that?
No, no, sir. In fact, this is probably more friendly to home occupations than our current zoning ordinance. My department's been fairly friendly to those kind of things. It effectively creates jobs without having to add any kind of infrastructure or construction to a commercial district. They're great, so we support that.
I'll be quiet now. This is public, this is a public hearing, so anyone here is welcome to ask questions. If you would, sir, if you would just come to the podium and the microphone, if you would state your, state your name just so we know who you are, and if you don't mind, maybe give us your address so we kind of know where.
That's my address.
And actually, yeah, I've seen it laying here, but.
No, I played football with your father back in 1962, so I'm older than I seem.
Well, you look pretty good.
I work with Mr. Reese's son at DSS, Jamie. My name's Philip Bowman. I've lived here all my life except for college and a period in the military. I joined up, learned to fly helicopters, spent a year in Vietnam getting shot at, got shot down three times. I worked 33 years for the Department of Social Services. The county very happily gave me a key to the county and an order of the longleaf pine when I retired. I'm very concerned about what's going on with the amount of housing development that's going on in the county. We're losing forest lands. I'm a certified arborist, a certified plant professional. Our forest lands are in danger. Pine trees are being wiped out by the southern pine beetle. The ambrosia beetle is killing many of our favorite landscape trees. I taught school at Happy Plains back in 1976. Well, actually, that's wrong, in 1967. Excuse me, I'm old. I taught fifth and sixth grade at Happy Plains. The last year was segregated schools. Also coached the men's basketball and baseball teams. I met a lot of these people. I loved them. I loved teaching. I was going back to finish my teaching degree when I got drafted. I joined for flight school, didn't particularly care to walk in Vietnam. Flying turned out to be a lot more dangerous than walking was, but when I was in the 80s or 90s, I taught a course for Wilkes Community College on the effects of overpopulation. Right now, we may blame cars and a lot of other things for what's going on with CO2. People are the biggest problem we have right now. Overpopulation is causing climate changes more than anything else. We look at Africa, where all the trees have been cut down for firewood so they can eat. We look at countries that have, the Amazon rainforest was being decimated so people could grow food. It was poor land and only lasted three years before they had to cut in Berlin, other swaths. That's changed. The president they have now is making changes. The effects of overpopulation are going to affect us more than most people realize. As people get congested more and more together, we have more violence. We have more automobile wrecks already from people who come here who don't know how to drive. We had four killed a couple of months ago at one weekend. Somebody's killed about every week in a head-on collision. This is because we have more traffic. It's harder to get on Highway 16 or Highway 127. We have development that's taking place all over the county. When there was a Chamber of Commerce years ago, they had a focus group that was called Alexander Visions. They had perhaps the largest representation of the county that I've ever seen. I was invited to be part of it. They hired a professional moderator. We learned a lot of new words. We had meetings, chalkboards, discussion. At the end of that, we had some rather unanimous conclusions. We all wanted to keep Alexander County small, rural, and agriculturally protected. We wanted businesses that would not harm the environment and things that would benefit the county. Right now, agriculture is the biggest moneymaker that this county has. It produces more money than any other business here, so I'm glad to see that we're protecting our farmlands. But we have a lot of, people move here because we have a lot of green forest lands, we have good water. With these things, they come now and all we see is cutting, clear-cutting timber. You see the mountains with big bald spots of 100, 200 acres, which affects the water runoff into the Catawba River, which, as you've already mentioned, water is going to be a major issue in the future. Charlotte's gaining 100 people per day. They're concerned about what's going on and actually have a TV program talking about what their effects are. Their traffic jams are a nightmare. I don't want to see that happen here, although I can see the beginning of it, and I can project where it will go eventually. The reason that our forest lands are so important is a pound of tree wood will give you a pound of carbon and a pound of oxygen. These are nature's storehouse for carbon dioxide, that and our oceans, which are also being overrun with CO2. These are things that we have to be concerned about. How much do we want growth to override the will of the people? When we had the Alexander Visions, our conclusions were that we wanted to remain a small rural county, protect our farmlands, get businesses that were clean, and we didn't mind being a bedroom community for the other cities. What I see right now is similar to what's happening at the border, our southern border. If you look at the five counties, including Alexander, the number of people moving into this area is going to be unstoppable. It's a place where people want to live. I love living here. I love my country, but I do not want to see us become just another overpopulated small county with traffic jams, increase in violence. These are things that happen when you have overpopulation. So I know that we have real estate agents as part of our commissioners. I would hope that there's no conflict of interest in what we're doing here and what the people of the county. I'm probably related to two-thirds of the county. Between the Dottons and the Bowman's, I know a lot of people. There's a lot of people out there who don't come forward to speak, but who are very concerned about what's happening to our county. I would just ask you and beg you to take into consideration the citizens who have lived here, their land cost. If you want a low-cost housing, the land prices are going up, 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 and will continue to do so as long as there are demands. So I just ask that you keep this in mind and you consider the indigenous population of which I'm part of. We live here because we love this county. It's beautiful. We have good people. So I just ask that you take this into consideration as you make these new rules. 104 pages of what's going to happen is a bit over, over what we want to see. Thank you very much for the opportunity.
Thank you. If no one else has anything to speak upon and/or questions to ask, gentlemen, do we have a motion to close the public hearing?
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to close the public hearing. Gentlemen, are there any discussion? If not, all in favor of closing the public hearing, please raise your right hand.
We need to approve it tonight.
I mean, not so we have to.
What date was the land development rezoning sent out to the public for viewing?
It was in this last week's Transcuany Times and the week before that half-page ad. The zoning map has been up for about two months now.
But released to the public, the actual changes and verbiage?
About two months. It's been on the website for a while. State law says that we still have to do a half-page, even if we've had it up for a year, we still have to do a half-page notice in the paper to let folks know that we're having a public hearing.
And that was run?
Last Wednesday, Wednesday before that.
Okay, so that's been run twice.
Then the verbiage has been on the website, you say?
Yes, sir.
Everything I've seen on the Land Development Code rezoning structure for, that's been proposed, it's been a more relaxed fit with nothing in regards, our agricultural is protected. Are we voting on this tonight?
That's, I mean, I think, I think the intent was for us to vote on it tonight, but.
I'll make a motion that we approve the presented land development code that was presented before us.
We have a motion and a second. Are there any discussion? I will say, and I'm, you know, when I look at this, I'm not a big government guy. I am a, you know, I was raised that people that have the ability to take care of themselves should take, you know, and, you know, and I'm a firm believer in we and/or the government in general doesn't need to have its nose stuck into anything more than it has to. And when I look at this, to me, it seems, looking at it from a, looking at it from afar or a broad perspective, this will allow people to do, this will allow people more freedom in the use of their property, which I am, I mean, which I'm in favor of. I mean, absolutely in favor of a big picture. So, and I also, you know, I, I see the, I do, you know, in my real job, I see the real estate market, I see the, you know, I see the construction business. I have two daughters that are. I have two daughters that are both wondering if they'll ever be able to buy a house because, you know, they, they say they can't, you know, they don't know how, how they'll ever afford a, you know, afford the payment on a quote-unquote affordable house, which is over three-hundred thousand dollars now. And I also see this as a, as a way to, to help with the, the need for and/or problem in that there's not enough affordable, quote-unquote affordable, housing. Because when, you know, when houses that I, that I built and sold five years ago for a hundred-and-forty thousand dollars are reselling, I actually saw one, I don't have any, anything to do with it reselling, I just saw, you know, but it is, it went back, you know, went back up for sale and is currently under contract for two-hundred-and-seventy And I'm talking a little bitty, plain, no garage, vinyl siding, you know, absolute starter home. You know, and I do feel like this, this will, this will at least attempt to improve that. So, any other discussion?
Well, I guess I'm just a rural country guy, but that's why, where I live, I got, you know, several acres around the house. But if somebody wants to live ten feet from somebody else, you know, that's their thing, and I know we've discussed this before, the ten-feet developments, you know, we need to, you know, hold everything pretty close on those. If I've got ten or eight or ten or twelve or fifty acres of land, you know, we need to, you know, kind of ease up on that person because, you know, they want to be in the middle of it, just like Mr. Bowman was talking about the trees, the things that you can do. So from what I've read in this, I think that kind of clears up a lot of the, you know, our old one was kind of overlapping the same on everything, you know? So, you know, I think it's, you know, what I've seen and read of it, I think it's a good thing and will help, you know, any person in the county, whether, you know, with what they're wanting to do with their property. So that's my thoughts.
And I'll say, one other thing I'd mention, our school system is dealing with a problem created by a reduction in the number of children in Alexander County. You know, and I can't imagine that many of you aren't aware that our school system has shrunk by over a thousand children, which works out to about twenty percent in the past, you know, twelve or so years. And, and I fully, you know, and it's, and it's not like, it's not like the amount of housing has decreased, but we, you know, we don't have a lot of, we don't have, well, we don't have a lot of affordable. And, you know, we, and I, you know, like I say, I think, I think this, the positives are, you know, outweigh the negatives. And nothing's perfect. And that's, I'll say, citizens of Alexander County trust us to make the hard decisions, and that's what we're going to do. So, anyone else? If not, I'll call for a vote. All in favor of approving the land development code as presented, please raise your right hand. Pass unanimously. Mr. Burgess, thank you for all your work on this. If you folks don't know, how many, roughly how many pages?
Coming up four-hundred.
This was not a small task that has been taken lightly. This is not something that was whipped up in two days. Yeah.
Easily three.
Okay.
Easily three.
It took three?
Easily, yeah.
Yeah. But anyway, we appreciate your, your work and your department's work, and we will move on. Thanks, sir.
Thank you.
Excuse me. Moving right along, our next item is a public hearing pertaining to historic preservation designer review standards text amendments. We will recognize Nancy Coley, who is the historic preservation, who is a historic preservation committee member. Gentlemen, this is a public hearing, so we do need a motion to go into public hearing, again pertaining to the historic preservation text amendments.
Make a motion.
Second.
A motion and a second. Any discussion? If not, all in favor, please raise your right hand. We are now in public hearing once again.
Thank you. The historical heritage of Alexander County is one of our most valued and important assets. The preservation of historic districts stabilizes and increases property values and strengthens the overall economy of the county. The purpose of this public hearing is to consider the adoption of standards for murals in historic districts and its addition to Alexander County's historic design standards. The Alexander County Historic Preservation Commission respectfully requests your consideration of the proposed addition to the historic design standards. The standards for murals were formulated to ensure the continued visual character of our historic districts while allowing for creative expression in appropriate locations and designs. Murals and other similar forms of physical public art can both add and attract from the character of a building or a district based upon their location, size, shape, color palette, materials used, and the relationship to the historic context. Murals will require the issuance of a certificate of appropriateness to verify compliance with these standards and to ensure there is no conflict with Article seven of the Land Development Code. Thank you for your consideration, and we hope you will adopt the addition to the historic design standards. Any questions?
Excuse me, again. This, this is a public hearing. If anyone would like to speak or ask a question, you are welcome to do so.
The changes, as far as I can tell, for ones that are listening, it's just for murals. Is that correct?
Yes.
Okay.
That's correct.
Who's going to govern? Is this something that will come under Brian or how will this be enforced?
The commission would be asked for a certificate of appropriateness.
Okay.
So we'll see if it's in compliance.
Okay. So they would contact a member of the board or Connie or something? Okay.
Go through Connie's.
Okay.
Yeah.
All right. That's all I have.
So, so to clarify that to some degree, if someone wants to, if someone wants to put up a mural, you know, on a historical building and/or in historic district, correct, or excuse me, thank you for correcting me, they would, you know, apply for a certificate of appropriateness currently through the Historic Preservation Commission. And do we as, do we as the county make contacting the Historic Preservation Commission, you know, do we make that easy for people to, you know, find how to do that? Because I, I don't know the answer to that question. Ms. Connie Kincaid is shaking her head yes. So is it, Ms. Connie, would you, would you mind coming to the microphone just for a So I, so I'm just, yeah, I'm just for clarification, I want to put a mural up in a historic, you know, in historic district. How do I, how do I figure out who to call?
Typically, the first contact, point of contact is the reception desk in the administration building.
Okay.
And then Kathy refers them directly to me.
Okay.
And the certificate of appropriateness process has been, and it's been valid since we first began our whole historic preservation process in the county. So we've already, the commission has already reviewed and issued quite a few certificates of appropriateness, and it's primarily to make certain that people don't hurt their historic buildings.
Okay. So, so essentially, you know, people can just contact the county?
And they'll be directed to me.
Right. And, and, and it will be channeled to the proper authorities and very, very good.
So there's no charge for?
No, sir, there's no fee for filing, a certificate of appropriateness application.
All right. Well, I will say this, I would be the last person to apply, at least to, I would be the last person to apply to, apply or to put a mural on something because I do well to draw stick people. But I guess I could always bring in someone artistic that has the ability to do so.
Correct.
You might want to put Lael Institute on something.
You never know.
That's all I got. Thank you, Connie.
Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you.
Anyone else have anything they'd like to say and/or question they would like to ask? If not, do I have a motion to close public hearing?
Same move.
Second.
We have a motion and a second.
Your second.
Marty.
Marty.
Is there any discussion? If not, all in favor of closing the public hearing, please raise your right hand. Pass unanimously. Gentlemen, I will make a motion to approve the text amendments pertaining to mural design review for the historic preservation. A second. Districts. We have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? If not, all in favor of approval, please raise your right hand. Passes unanimously. Thank you very much for what you guys do to try to keep, keep things attractive and, not only attractive, but historic and educational and cool. Next item, budget ordinance amendments, numbers twenty-four through twenty-six. I would recognize Ben Falkenberry, our interim county manager.
Good evening, chairman and commissioners. I have three budget amendments to present for your consideration tonight, number twenty-four, twenty-five, and twenty-six. Budget ordinance amendment number twenty-four is to amend the general fund expenditures as well as the estimated revenues to be changed to increase the register of deeds office budget for a state grant award plus a hundred percent local match requirement. That state grant was for two thousand for a total increase in the expenditures of four thousand for that line item. Also to increase the soil and water budget for two grants from the nonprofit agency NC Foundation for Soil and Water Conservation. That grant required a thirty percent local match requirement, and the grants are for education supplies and adron. The register of deeds grant is for the preservation of historic records and files. This amendment also addresses the health department's health promotion budget for updated cost estimates to purchase Narcan vending machines. That is in the works for funding from Blue Cross Blue Shield to provide those vending machines. This is an increase in the estimated cost of two thousand dollars for a total of seven thousand dollars for that particular project. The final for number twenty-four is to increase the health department general health budget for additional state grant funds from the ARPA Temporary Savings Fund for Public Health Services. So budget ordinance amendment number twenty-four is grant-focused with some matches in there and some changes to the general fund to accommodate for those matches. Budget ordinance amendment number twenty-five is to also amend the general fund expenditures and estimated revenues to increase the public buildings budget for maintenance on the fire alarm systems at three county buildings. This was discussed for next year's budget but thought that it was a necessary need for this year for immediate action to address the fire alarms at those buildings and to update them. That is a thirty thousand dollar increase. That money was moved from the professional technical services in the governing body to address that need. This budget amendment also is to increase the sheriff's office budget for the use of state funds from distributions of the unauthorized substance tax. These special funds must be used for that purpose to increase the law enforcement budget, can't be used for any other reason. The fund balance is being used for this budget amendment because the special state funds were received in a prior budget year and are in the fund balance. The final budget amendment is number twenty-six, and that is to amend the school capital improvement fund expenditures, fourteen thousand one hundred and sixty-one dollars, and this is to accommodate for costs that are exceeded from original estimates for carpet replacement projects in school buildings. Those are at four different schools, the auditorium at the high school, and also the media centers at Hidnite, East Alexander, and I believe Bethlehem. I'd be happy to attempt to answer any other questions that the board may have. I'm happy to see the subject matter expert sitting in the back and finance director Herman. So hopefully, if you, if you have any questions I can't answer, she'll, she'll be here to help. But I also appreciate the finance department in getting these together for your consideration tonight.
Thanks, sir.
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion to approve budget amendments twenty-four, twenty-five, and twenty-six as presented.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? If not, all in favor of approval of the budget amendments as presented, please raise your right hand. Passes unanimously. Next item is our consent agenda. Gentlemen, you have, you have had the consent agenda in your information. Do I have a motion?
Make a motion to approve consent agenda as given to us.
I'll second that. Any discussion? If not, all in favor, please raise your right hand. Passes unanimously. Number eleven, county manager's report. I would recognize interim county manager Ben Falkenberry once again.
Thank you once again. First, I want to personally thank the board, Mr. Chairman, and all the commissioners for this opportunity to serve as the interim county manager on top of my current duties as county attorney. It's a, it's a position that I will take seriously, and I hope that I can help in any way to move this county forward and be there to help provide positive change and growth to this county. It's my home county, it's where I grew up, and I love it. The first update is a fire and EMS update. May has been a busy month for our emergency services personnel and providers. Within the first two days of the month of May, there were four structure fires, and there was also a fire at the landfill on May first that was quickly responded to by Hidnite, Stony Point, and Wittenberg Fire Departments, along with sheriff personnel, EMS, and public works director Josh Mitchell. Thanks to their swift response, the fire was contained, did not cause major damage other than to two tractor trailers that had trash in them. If there was anything that was to catch fire, we would hope it would be a tractor trailer full of trash. But we want to thank them all for their, their rapid response. I do have an update tonight as to the Bethlehem water tank. I, I do have an update tonight as to the Bethlehem water tank. Closing on two and a half acres of property behind PJ's Seafood and Steak in Bethlehem occurred on April 24th. Everything went smoothly. This property is ideal for placement of the water tank due to its elevation and location. And I'd like to thank Fox Watson Properties, the owner and seller, for their cooperation in helping to move the water tank project forward. The Bowman Court Sewer Line Project, of course, was, first round of bids were rejected as they were above budget. We went through the second round of bids, um, but those, we only received two bids. We went back through the whole entire process. Not enough bids to open, so we will have a second round of bids on May 9th. And under state law, this time if we get one round, or one bidder, we may have something to present to you on the May 20th Commissioners Meeting to move that project forward. Wittenberg Access Swim Beach, the ribbon, ribbon cutting is scheduled for May 24th at 2:00 PM. More details will follow, but this will be a great addition to our parks and green space. We are still looking for part-time park attendants, so if anyone in the audience or listening online would like a summertime job, enjoying the great outdoors and fresh air at the lake, please contact county administration, we will make it happen. Rocky Fest was a great success on April 22nd with a record turnout and some wonderful weather. You know, they've had bad luck with weather the last few years, but this time, uh, it was a great turnout. Thank you to Alicia Stamey and all our parks and county staff, and also thanks to the vendors, musicians, and volunteers that made it a wonderful event. Uh, the sheriff has rolled out a mobile app that you can find on the Google Play or Apple Store by searching Alexander County Sheriff NC. This is an effort to keep our citizens informed. And it has key features such as real-time alerts, news, news releases, jail population inquiries, and the ability to submit a tip to law enforcement. So this would be a great tool that our citizens can use to stay more informed. This is a completely free app, so I invite everyone to download it and take advantage of it. Our EMS has recently expanded its capabilities to provide our citizens with life-saving care through these, uh, addition of a special mini bio fridge that is in the QRV unit, the Quick Response Unit. This cooler can hold, hold blood, store it between 1 and 6 degrees Celsius, and can quickly respond to trauma incidents in, in the county in order to begin blood transfusions on site. This is absolutely going to save lives, and we, I congratulate EMS in, in bringing this to our citizens. And finally, some reminders of some upcoming events. The 10th Annual Vertical Mile Challenge is scheduled for June 22nd at Rocky Face. There are two different races. There's the full vertical mile and the half vertical mile. That begins at 8:00 AM. You can register at rockyfacepark.com or ultrasignup.com. Space is limited to the first 175 people, so it's a, it's a race to see if you can register in time. Awards are for fastest male and female Alexander County resident, so there's a local flair to the awards this year. The Alexander County Farmers Market began, was supposed to begin this past Saturday, but I think because of the weather, it was canceled. But that will continue every Saturday from now until September. So this is a great opportunity to come out to the services center in Taylorsville between 8:00 and 12:00 every Saturday to support your local growers and farmers and to get some fresh fruits and vegetables. Finally, the summer concert series kicks off this Saturday, May 11th, with Alabama Sunset, which is an Alabama tribute band. So, after your 40-hour week for a living, you can go hear some mountain music with your Dixie Land light. So, that's the county manager's report. Thank you.
Thanks, sir.
Thank you. Will you be singing?
No.
Okay.
I was saying, and your report was slightly punny.
The only question I had for you, if you don't mind. I just wanted to know if you're gonna make the vertical mile, sir?
A vertical mile?
Yes.
Uh, I've, I've done one lap at Rocky Face, and that's about as far as I can go. I think eight laps is the requirement, so it's very strenuous.
It is.
I have to train for a while.
I, I actually was, was thinking about asking when you finished, how many, you know, how, how many laps or how many, you know, did it take to do the vertical mile? Because I have no interest whatsoever in participating in that.
It's a stairway to heaven, and you may end up there if you keep going.
And, and I've said many times, if you ever see me running, you should run too.
The sun is chasing me, you know. If I was being chased by a bear, I might run up one time, but I'd either, you know, jump off or something, you know.
And I've also, and I've also been, been told, you know, if you are running from a wild animal, as long as you're not the slowest person,
You're all right.
You should be okay.
Yeah.
So, anyway. But yeah, I, I, no, I, I very much respect the people that, that do push themselves and and are in much better shape than I am. You know, that, uh, that have completed the vertical mile and/or even attempt to, to do it. So, um, but thanks for your report.
Thank you.
Thank you.
At this time, I would ask for a motion to go into closed session per North Carolina General Statute 143-318, point 11, A4, 5, and 6. So there can be discussion pertaining to economic development, contractual, and personnel issues.
Make a motion.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor, please raise your right hand. We will reconvene for the purpose of adjournment only. We will not take any action when we come back into open session. Thank you very much for being here, and hope to see you next meeting, which actually will be May 20th. Thank you very much.